Hello, I'm Arlene Velasco and I will be chairing this meeting tonight. Winston Welch is not being able to make it. So I'd like to call this meeting to order and we are going to start with the announcement about the meeting materials. It can be located on Google Drive. I was notified that the Board of Water Supply is not going to be able to present here tonight. So if you have any questions on what they were going to report, it will be on the Google Drive that is listed on the agenda. So if there's any questions, you can ask me right now. And any questions from anyone? Okay, then we will proceed to our Public Safety Monthly Reports. So we'll start usually with the Fire Department, but I don't see anyone unless they're online. Any fire personnel online? Okay, then we'll go back to them when they show up. We'll go to the Honolulu Police Department, District 6. And are they here? All right, then we will go to the Honolulu Police Department, District 7. Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Heights, East Honolulu.
Good evening for District 7. The stats for this month, we have 11 motor vehicle thefts, eight reported burglaries, 16 thefts, and 11 unauthorized entry to motor vehicle cases. Total cost for service for the month is $6,357. And a safety tip for the month, being that it's Halloween at the end of the month, a couple of tips would be plan costumes that are bright and reflective or by adding reflective tape or striping. Have a parent or responsible adult always accompany young children on their neighborhood rounds. Stay in a group, walk slowly, don't run, and communicate where you're going. Never enter a stranger's home or car for a treat. Approach only familiar houses and houses that are well lit. And don't eat treats until they are thoroughly checked by an adult at home. Other Halloween tips we can be found online at HonoluluPD.org. For District 6, I see the lieutenant online, but I'm not sure if... Yeah, I don't think she says that she can't hear anything.
Can we see if we can locate her problem? All right.
Hi.
Oh, hi. Hi, Officer.
Sorry about that. I figured it out. Is it my turn?
Yes, it is. We are ready to hear from District 6 unless we have questions for District 7. Anybody in the community have any questions? Anybody online? Okay, anybody on the board? I do have a quick question. I run by Diamond Head Monument every morning and I've noticed a lot of activity this week. And I just was hoping to get the status of what's happening with the removal of the homeless people and if there's any, any hope of stopping the rinse and repeat that we seem to be doing with getting them ousted. They come back the next morning, getting them ousted, and they come back. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a chronic problem, Allen White. I'm not sure when the next cleanup is going to be happening up there. I know it's a coordination between the city and the state. One side is city-owned and one side is state-owned. And yeah, I don't have offhand when the next cleanup will be over there.
All right, thank you. Maybe we'll ask the city and the state when they plan the next cleanup. The state officials will be asked. Okay, so now we're ready for District 6.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. So my name is Lieutenant Pam Liu. I'm from Waikiki, District 6. So I have our stats for the month of August. In general, overall, our stats are, are, look good. We went down in pretty much everything as opposed to the month prior. So let's see, so for August robberies, we had two. The month prior, we had seven burglaries. This is the only area we went up, which is we had 11 burglaries. And the month prior, we had six. Our thefts also went down. We had 168 versus 188. UMBs, that's where they break into your car, that also went down. We had 14 as opposed to 21. General assaults, we had 31 as opposed to 38. Our sex crime offenses, we had two as opposed to six the month prior. Our bicycles and sidewalks, excuse me, bicycles and skateboard on sidewalk, we had 21. Speeding citations, we wrote 239. The month prior, we wrote 365. Parking, 1,908 as opposed to 2,423. We had one loud muffler citation. 82 park closures as opposed to 99 the month prior. The total cost for service is $4,707 as opposed to $5,101. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the community in person? Okay, how about anybody from the community online? All right, anybody from the board in person? Oh, is there a hand? Oh, yes, we have a hand. Hello, Margaret, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know that I just, I really appreciate the fact that the substation really looks cleaned up. They've really done a nice job on it. The windows are clean, the shades are up. It looks like it's open for business. And the, you know, they, the memorial has, was getting real tired and it's clean. They've taken that down and put pictures up of the officers from Hibiscus. But really compliment you on making it look inviting. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So yes, we did take the memorial down. That was being monitored by one of our Aloha ambassadors who was very dedicated to the memorial, but she has since moved to the mainland, so she was very personally attached. So we took the time to kind of reconfigure things. Just on a side note, the, in January, the, that substation will be going under remodeling, so it might be closed for a month or so while they do that. Some major changes, so right now I don't have anything to report as far as where we'll have, if we'll have another location where people can stop by. But for right now, it's slated for the first week in January.
Right, I have one question regarding e-bikes. Which government agency regulates the safety of, well, the traffic concerns of e-bikes? For instance, they travel almost as fast as a car on some of these side streets. And are they considered a moving vehicle? Are they considered a bicycle? How are they being handled?
Okay, thanks. That's a good question. Actually, there's very limited regulations on them. They are actually considered like in a, I don't want to say a toy. It's like an amusement type of thing. It's not a vehicle, it's not a moped, it's not a motorcycle, it's not a car. Yes, they do go fast. As far as, it's, it's kind of like a gray area right now. The city doesn't really have anything because technology is moving so quickly. They're coming up with so many different, you know, types of these toy type things. Their people are riding and they're going very fast. They're not allowed on the sidewalks in Waikiki. I'm not sure about other places, but that if they do, they're getting cited. And if they're in the middle of the roadway, we cite them for pedestrian and roadway because they're not on, they're not considered a bicycle or moped or a motorcycle. So they're getting cited, they're getting cited.
All right, thank you. Margaret, did you have any other questions about scooters?
Just noticed, because I walk it every three times a week too, and I've noticed that they're lying around on the sidewalks and somebody's going to trip on them. You know, they just, they can leave them anywhere. I mean, whoever it is, whomever it is that owns that business should be like, you know, responsible for making sure that they're not lying around. And I remember in the Caldwell area, era, when they came in and he got rid of them really fast. I think the company was called Mime. I don't know who, who this company is, but maybe they should, you know, contact whomever it is that is in charge and just make sure that they're... Because they're all over the place and they're all over the sidewalks too, going pretty fast.
Okay, that's a good point.
Thank you. That is true. They do have GPS, so the people who own, especially the black ones that you may see that kind of look like little kiddie scooters, they do have GPS on it. So when the people do rent them from little private properties, it says to return it and not to leave it laying around. I don't think there's a fine for that, but the people who own it, the company does come around and they do pick it up.
All right, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. Now we're going to go on to the filling of board vacancies. Any, is there anybody in the public who is, wants to fill a vacancy? All right, is there anybody online? All right, then we're gonna, we're gonna defer that action. So the next, I do not see any firemen here, so we're assumed they're not going to make it tonight. So let's go to item number four, which is the Board of Water Supply, Kapilani Community College, and Public Events announcements. So the Board of Water Supply, we already know that they are not going to be here. So we're going to go to the Kapilani Community College. It's... Do you see her? Okay, it appears that Carol is not here either. So we're going to go on now to Public Events Announcements, Parades, Fun Runs, et cetera. Do we have someone who is representing this section? No? All right, then we're going to go on to Community Concerns and Open Public Testimony. Usually we limit it to two minutes, maybe we could go up to three since we're kind of traveling along. So, yes, we have a member of the community. Please stand up and give your name and let us know what...
My name is Stanton Cheng. I am a resident of St. Louis Heights. And I want to read something from, from Representative Sayama. It's on his bulletin and it's about some announcements of a Waahila Ridge State Park Town Hall. The topics are disc golf proposal and wildfire prevention. It's for October 19th, which is next Thursday, between the hours of 7:00 and 8:00 p.m. It will be held at Hookalani Elementary Cafeteria located at 2940 Kamakini Street, which is pretty close to the Connie Y Park. This is the message from Jackson. It's something that we set up. I think he may have announced it already, but I just want to remind the group. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we have another community member coming up.
My name is Marshall Haney. I represent Diamond Head Elite and Condo, Poole Circle. We recently got a notice, a violation from the sitting county about that sidewalk that they built in front of our condo and that we're supposed to repair it. And they gave a prescription of why, but it was very insufficient. So I contacted them and asked them to send somebody over and show us exactly what it was that was in violation and show us exactly what we're supposed to do about it because I'm not a cement contractor. We've subsequently been gathering information and we may wish to contest this particular violation. In any event, they only gave us 30 days and you know you can't find a cement contractor to do a job we can't explain in 30 days. So I did bring a copy of the violation with me. I don't know if anybody here wants to get a copy or can suggest places to send it because we've tried twice to get a response and we've been what I call rushed off.
Yes, let's discuss. I also have business cards on the table. So I work for a city agency called the Neighborhood Commission Office and we can be the messenger to make sure that your concern goes to the right department. And I believe it would be the Department of Facility Maintenance if they're repairing sidewalks. But it sounds like you guys are supposed to repair the sidewalk.
Well, they told us either we have to or the city will do it in charges. But they wouldn't tell us, I mean, we don't know what they want us to do. You know, you get a contractor and he says, what do you want me to do? And I say, file a permit and do whatever you feel like. That's not going to work.
Okay.
We don't know what the city will charge. I requested information about that and didn't get that either, so.
So I can help you pass that message on and then we'll ensure that we get a response. Typically, because that's like a private entity issue, the boards don't get involved in private matters. More of the general public issues for government-related legislative priorities, that kind of thing.
Because we don't want to get in an arguing match with anybody.
Absolutely.
We want to find out what we're supposed to do.
And you said you had copies or something?
Yes, I did.
I'll take them for you.
In general, can someone answer, aren't, I always thought sidewalks were part of the public domain.
It's a city sidewalk that goes all the way around Poole Circle that's 60 years old and is decrepit in most sections. So we're not unique to have a section that might need a little tender loving care.
Okay, yeah, I'm familiar with that and aware of all the roots and uprooted everything.
And, and in our, in the section where she took the photo, there's a Hawaiian tail concrete box sunk into the sidewalk and it's been there forever. And they've been doing all kinds of stuff in our neighborhoods. Big machinery on the sidewalks, you know, so we're, we're not sure that this is our fault. So we want to find out.
Well, thank, thank you Dylan. He'll help, he'll help you. And we have, we're gonna, any other community concerns? Oh, Amanda.
Hello, everyone. I was just gonna add to what Mr. Haney, I believe his name, said. Just that there are circumstances in which the private property owner is responsible for the sidewalk. Usually it's driveway damage. Is the damage near the driveway?
Well, I would say that there is an asphalt driveway going into our parking lot and damage, which we're not sure exactly what is damage, that's the problem.
There's no visible signs of any damage?
It's not, it's not like a concrete apron-shaped driveway going into a parking lot. It's a sidewalk. It's probably at the length of this table away from any driveway. So nobody would walk up to go, oh, your driveway looks like it needs repairing because it's not the driveway.
I see. I'd be happy to look at it, take a look at it and see, you know, what other information we can, you know, help you with. But I, I, we, we do know that generally, any damage in the sidewalk that's near or on the driveway area is the responsibility of the property owner. And they do give you 30 days just as a default. But if they are working, if you are communicating with them and they know you're making an effort to, you know, work on it and correct it, they will generally always work with you and give you additional time.
If you were going to drive into the driveway at the location where this violation is, be driving over Hawaiian tail and Spectrum's technology, get to it. So I don't think it's the driveway. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other concerns, questions? Okay, I think our firemen have showed up and we'll get their report. We're now on to this Honolulu Fire Department, Section 2.
Hi, good evening. My name is Firefighter Yannick Moore from the Waikiki Fire Station. We've just got some statistics for you guys for this month. We have, we had some nuisance call this month, nuisance, I mean nuisance fires, excuse me. And nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle. We had six activated alarms. And for medical emergencies, we had 72. Had one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, motor, motor vehicle crash. We had three of those. We had two mountain rescues, one ocean rescue. For the fire safety tips, as you guys all know, I see, I'm sure you've seen the sign outside of our station. It's a National Fire Protection Association Fire Prevention Week. We observe it from October 8th through the 14th. As the national campaign is promoted throughout the month of October, this year's theme is cooking safety. And cooking safety starts with you, pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? Unattended cooking is the leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. What you can do, good news is you can prevent most cooking fires and burns. How keep your family safer with these simple but effective tips. First tip is turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Second one, always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease, grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Third one, watch what you heat. Setting a timer to remind you what you're cooking. And then four, have a kid, and pet-free zone at least three feet around the stove and areas where hot food or drink is prepared or prepared. Is that any question?
Anybody online have any questions? I don't see any hands. Well, thank you very much. Okay, so now we are on to item number six, which is the Federal, State, and City Government Administration Reports. The first congressional delegate would be the Representative Ed Kate. Is someone representing Ed here? No? Okay, next is Senator Mazie Hirono. Anyone from her office? No? Okay, next is Senator Brian Schott. Okay, and we're running right through all these. Okay, State Administration, the Governor's representative is here.
I almost feel like I have to reintroduce myself. It's been a few months since I've been able to be here. My name is Claudia Raffa. I am here as the Governor's representative. My day job is with the Hawaii State Energy Office. So I'm pleased to be here tonight and I know we have many new members. So I might just explain how we come to these meetings. And the governor has asked all of the PIOs, or PAO in case of need, as well as the deputy directors to attend neighborhood board meetings on Oahu and the neighbor islands where available. So that's why I'm here. I do live in a neighborhood. So all of these discussions end up being very interesting to me. So I'm happy to be here. I was gone for the last couple of months because we have been working on Maui Fire Response, so that's been our priority now that things are settling down to the extent we can get back to normal in the state. So that is why I'm back here tonight and happy to answer any questions you may have. Just as a matter of record, I did bring the October and September newsletters for your interest. Interest in the October edition of the newsletter is the Hawaii State Energy Office. Our activities in recent weeks have included helping to bring five new electric vehicle buses to Oahu. Those are both for school transportation as well as tourism. So that's something that we're excited about, the 30 diesel replacement program that we administer through the office. Another thing that I might mention for the office itself, realizing there again, a big state, so, you know, happy to take back any questions or answer those that I can. But the office is working on a, a major project from our perspective for really taking a hard look at decarbonization in the state of Hawaii. So we have two laws that, one, I think most people are familiar with, which is renewable energy and our goal to be 100% renewable power by 2045. But there's a second law that not as many people are familiar with. And that is in effort to, to be as carbon negative as possible or practicable. It's actually what the law states, by 2045. And it's basically as soon as possible, but no later than 2045. And the goal is to be net negative. And to be carbon net negative, we have to do more than just transition renewable power. Becoming net negative and establishing a carbon-free or to a carbon-negative green energy economy requires significant impacts to things like transportation, agriculture, all of the things that make our economy run. Now, we think we can do this, but it's going to take everybody working togetherness, understanding what this means for us as a state. So our office has been tasked by the legislature to produce a report that we are currently working on. And I encourage everybody to take a look at the information that we currently have on our website. We are in the middle of this report, so I have nothing, you know, to say, here's what it shows because we're right in the middle of it. But we are very anxious to have public input and awareness to this report. Our website is energy.hawaiian.gov. And look for decarbonization. There you will find a webinar that we have posted that explains kind of the models that we're taking a look at, explains a little bit about the law and about some of the things that we are doing. The report will be due to the legislature in January. And we expect to have many more discussions into next year. So this is not something that's going to be just a report that says, here's, here's the, here's what we can do because really it's much more complicated than that. So I encourage everybody, I realize not everybody goes out to the Energy Office website, but if you do, please take a look at it, look at the decarbonization report. And if you have thoughts about it, if you would like for us to consider things, there is a form that can be filled out to provide public comment. And so we are working right now on stakeholder outreach efforts for six weeks. And like I said, this is not something that's just going to be wrapped up by the end of the year. We will deliver our report on time, of course. But this is something that's going to be of extreme interest, I think, to everybody in the state and the comment. So I encourage everybody to...
Any comments from the community? We have a taker.
Yes, I have the comment. Stanton Cheng again. In September 15th, the, the governor issued another emergency proclamation regarding housing and motor vehicle. My concern is, is the Sunshine Law, is the availability of having an open meeting for that particular group, for the Building Beyond Better Working Group. The, the meeting for October was postponed or canceled. And my concern is that we'll have the open for the public to attend or to listen in. That would be the November meeting. There was a previous emergency proclamation by the governor back in July. And you've probably heard the resignation of the Chief Housing Officer and the revision of the protocol or the process of this working group. And I'm very curious of having the information made available to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent point.
I'll just close that by saying I will take that back. I, I do know that that is something that they're obviously concerned about and working on. And so I will make sure to relay those concerns and provide information when I receive it back to the board. So you can make sure of it.
Okay, any other questions from the online? You have several. Go ahead. Angie, go ahead.
So sorry. I have a question that might be very foundational and a little basic. But whenever the state has the different goals by like 2025 for carbon neutral, oh, yeah, for carbon, so sorry. But those ones, again, this is a very foundational question, so I'm so sorry. But is that all of the state or all of the state agencies?
That is the entire state and it is in statute. So we call it a goal, but it is actually, we are one of the few states that actually has it in statute. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no one else online, I do have two questions for the Governor's office. One is referencing to the tragedy that happened in Maui. And I also lived through a wildfire in California, so I'm really aware of the, what these poor people are going through and what I don't want to happen to anyone else ever. And one of the big culprits in California, probably in Maui, were above line live wires sparking and transformers in high winds. And the solution has always been to bury lines. New housing developments, you know, almost always now in the mainland and anywhere... New housing developments, you know, almost always now in the mainland and anywhere you go have buried lines. And I keep being told how expensive it is to retrofit these old neighborhoods. But what's, you know, I would go back to, well, what's, how do you value somebody's life? You know, we've lost over 100 people in Maui, many more in California, and it's a tragedy. And I'd like to know the priority that the governor is trying to put is, I would hope he's going to put a high priority on finding the funds and getting interest in getting these lines buried. I mean, you just look at Palolo Valley, and that's a tragedy waiting to happen. Manoa Valley, you have any of those lines, poles fall, and people will be trapped. And if there's a fire anywhere, it could get ugly real fast.
It is something that I'm sure will be looked at. And in this case, just from my own personal background, I've worked in utilities. Actually, most of my background is working for electric utilities. And so undergrounding is always a big issue. And I lived for many years, I've always lived in the West. So I'm very familiar, probably too familiar actually, with fires as well. I've not lived in California, but I've lived in Montana and Colorado. And so I've worked on many fires, actually, with the utility. Undergrounding is possible. You're right, there is an expense, and it does become a trade-off question. And when we say that, how should it be paid for is, becomes the question. Because I understand your perspective, absolutely. You know, I feel in many respects the same way. But then it becomes a question in the utility world of, is that going to be borne by the customers or the ratepayers? Is it borne by the taxpayers? The utility gets its money from both, right? So then it becomes, how do these things get funded? And then you get into the question of, for example, underground lines also take much longer to repair when they fall. Because you have to dig them up, repair them, and fall. So they're not a perfect solution, but they are a solution to fix certain problems. And there are certain areas where it does make certainly a lot of sense. And I do think that as we peel back all the layers of complexity and the onion peel of how these fires started, and we all have same goal is to never have this happen again anywhere. You know, what are the tools that are in place that are going to make sure that that happens? So if it were just as simple as this, that, or the other thing, I think those things would have been done. And they would have been done. But it's a question of, you know, how, when, who, and how could?
Is there any way to have a commission or people that are actually tasked with really looking into this? Because what I hear constantly over the years is the same, same thing. And yet doesn't seem like any action, even after a fire like we've experienced.
The Energy Office, our role in this as an energy office, we are responsible for, among other things, energy assurance and reliability. So in some respects, that is something that's in our pool to take a look at. And that is something that we will be taking with that. In addition to such things as fuels, you know, and making sure that poles are hardened and insulated wires. And there's a lot of different, you know. So like I said, there's many components to making sure that we have energy assurance and reliability and all of these things that are associated with it. The other factor or the other player in essence, the public utilities commission. Because they are the regulator for the utilities in this state, and they are the ones that help determine how these expenses are allocated to customers, to ratepayers, to taxpayers, those things. We do have, fortunately, an awful lot of federal dollars that are becoming available to us as a state. And so those things are going to help us get a handle on those areas. Because not every single area has the same risk profile. So we really need to prioritize where the risks are and what's the best solution for those areas. And that is something that my office is working on. We do have a grant for that right now. So that is actually something that we are deeply involved with. And we're actually hiring a person to help us do this. So if anybody is interested in this role, take a look at our report, too. But that is something that is very important, because not every area is the same. And so you really do get into fire fuels. You know, another concern is just how much weight these poles have placed on them from comms that are on board. So there's an awful lot of things that need to be looked at. And I would say, as important it is to us and as priority it is to us that around the country, and there, everybody's creating issues too. As our climate continues to change and the considerations get worse. And, you know, I think we've seen now, certainly in the West, we've seen a lot of really horrific examples of neighborhoods catching fire and blinking out. We really have to do something to prevent it.
Thank you very much. I have one more question that has to do with your carbon neutralization. It's a quick question. And in the past, I know that Hawaii's carbon numbers have excluded all the air travel coming and going. And I was wondering if that is going to be considered in this report?
It is to a degree. One of the things that is something that we are looking at, there are some transportation numbers we can include. There are some numbers that we cannot include or won't be able to include because we simply don't have the numbers in order to model. And that gets more to the international problem. But there are certain numbers that we do have available to us that we will be looking at. But it is included in our report, and it will be acknowledged as a concern. But like I said, there are just some factors that we don't even have the access to, to provide the model and allow for a good solid answer.
Yes, Dylan. Okay, we have Margaret online. You're next.
Hi. The poles on St. Louis Heights are really in bad shape. They're doubled up and with hanging wires and trucks have hit them, buses have hit them. And is there any, I've been back and forth in the past with PUC and all of that. And I know that Jackson Sayama and Calvin say we're supposed to be working on it. Is there any way that you can have some sort of training program for the guys that hang the wires to, you know, make them as unobtrusive as possible? I think in the last two years, we also saw the really tall poles go in with big metal boxes with no notice. What's that all about?
So tall poles.
Real tall ones, yeah.
Real tall ones. And I can only speak to what I know that they, the problem that they serve. I can't speak necessarily to the particular installations. But when we talk about grid hardening and making sure that things are protected and resilient, it usually does involve taller, stronger poles. That's usually how grid resilience is managed, and that is considered to be hardening. It's also the composite of the poles in terms of, do you have just a wood, which can of course be subject to all sorts of pests? Or do you have composites that are more able to withstand hurricane force? So generally speaking, those kind of installations are better for reliability. They are better for making sure that the grid is able to withstand whatever gets thrown at it, either from Mother Nature or a driver.
Now, we have both. We have double-up poles, we have poles that are, have been, they have metal around them. And it's really distressing, because these guys just need to take some sort of a course in how to clip wires and tie knots.
Well, they're probably comms is what you're looking at.
What, what are they?
They're probably the communications wires that you're referring to.
Right, that's one.
Because the electric wires are on top.
Right.
So those, you can always tell an electric wire because they have what's called the insulator, the bells that are attached to the poles. The wires that are below those, which oftentimes look very heavy, those are all fiber optic. So they're different things, but they are all done by standards. And so they are regulated, and there are standards for installation. And so, you know, I can't speak for communications, whether it's Spectrum or Hawaiian Tel or any of those, I don't know. I do know that I've seen even my own standpoint, because you'll have what's called, not to get all nerdy on double circuits, which means two circuits to electric and comms. And I look at some of those just everywhere. I'm one of those nerdy people that pays attention to those things. So, because I also have a technical background too, so I look at that, oh, that's a lot of weight on those poles. But they're, again, they're rated to withstand that kind of weight. And really what becomes a problem for any of these situations is where you have underbrush underneath the wires. Because oftentimes, the right of ways under the lines are kept free, not always, but usually. But then you'll have trees that are taller than the right of way come down. And that's always a, that's really a problem on big island towns, because they come down very easily.
That's not the case in our neighborhood.
And so it's all rated for demand, and it's rated for the area. And so the priorities, the individuals or the companies that are responsible would be Hawaiian Electric, Hawaiian Tel, Spectrum, and the Public Utilities Commission.
We've called them. And the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay, we have another question from Noella.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Thank you for this great presentation on this, ma'am. I totally hear what Margaret's saying, and I underlined it in red. Because when Hurricane Lane came through the Hawaiian Islands as a tropical storm, the experience I had where I live was it took 11 hours for the lines to get back up because we lost our power around 10:30 in the morning. And the power did not go on until midnight. And I observed the whole process, and it was an interesting one. It took a very long time, obviously. But long story short, the electric lines had to be stabilized first. And then that was the main goal. But before that could happen, the Hawaiian Tel and the Spectrum workers came out, and they had to destabilize theirs for a better lack of word. They had to do their work first, and they had the giant trucks with the stabilizers. And they were out there for a long time. And finally, at the very end, Hawaiian Electric went up on the real big cherry pickers. And then they, you know, got everything going. But it took an awful long time. And so my question to you, and regarding the training, as Ms. Murchy said, is that was 11 hours that my neighborhood, which is somewhat large, was out of power. And we were ready for it. But nevertheless, I think that's something, based on what you've said during your presentation, that is very important that Spectrum, Hawaiian Tel, and HECO work very closely together on this and figure this one out, because it was a very, very, very long time. Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for the governor's rep? Okay, I think, I think we're done. Let's move on to our mayor's representative. Is there a mayor's representative online?
Yes. Can I get my video started here? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to come in front of your board. It's nice to see everyone again. The mayor's report, starting off, I think people might have seen the article in the couple of Sundays ago on the mayor's stance on enforcing public welfare laws. And kind of put that piece on the ACLU lawsuit that we're currently engaged in. I know I personally had to testify in that lawsuit, so I'm familiar with it. So we just wanted to let you know that the mayor's position on that is we do reserve the capability and the rights to be able to enforce public welfare laws. These are the sit-ly laws, after park closures laws, things like that. Safe and Sound Waikiki Initiative marks its first year. And on September 5th, the mayor was joined with prosecuting attorney Steve Alm and council chair Waters and other leaders and the police. And they gave the statistics in Waikiki and crime rates in almost every category. The crime rates have come down, and we're going to continue that program going into its second year. On affordable housing updates, September was a busy month. We had some new places starting to come online, projects that we've been working on, like Parkway Village in Kapale, Kihaapi Place in Kailua, and Halei Waiolu in Chinatown. Halei Waiolu, that's a senior housing project, was a long time coming. I know I was in on a blessing this week on Hocking Halli in Chinatown. This week, there are safety tips for fire protection. Maybe before I got on, the fire department gave these tips. But really trying to think about the different things that you can do to prevent fires. So we don't personally have the tragedy of a fire and then contribute the tragedy to our neighbors as well. Our parking meters got upgraded last month. And so it's a credit card friendly, on-street parking meters have been upgraded, better serve the public. These are 4G connected parking meters, and they were modernized to help you pay for parking with a credit card. Please read, this is my own personal note, but please read the things and carefully do what they say. There have been some problems with people hacking into those. So the newsletter that highlights all of these, the October newsletter, can be found online There was also an announcement, you may have seen this past week, on a new low-flow shower at Commaona Beach. And that was installed, and it's eco-friendly in what it's trying to do with the water. And it really, you know, those things are made for rinsing off. They're not made for taking showers, full showers and such. But hopefully, you've gone and seen that and liked that new installation that we've done there. In terms of follow-ups from last meeting, there was a question about a resident wanted to know which department, who they can speak with in regards to permitting for the removal of two trees adjacent to their condo. And of the two trees that would be removed, one for safety reasons and the other for cracking foundation. And so really, for questions on tree removal on private property in the Diamond Head Special District, please contact the Department of Planning and Permitting Land Use Permit Division. And they can be reached at 808-768-8032. So for that person, 768-8032. You know, I went out of my way to, for the next two requests. Months ago, when I got a request about trees, we wanted to bring in the person from Parks and Recs that had just been appointed, Roxanne Adams, to come to this board and present. And so I re-engaged the Department of Parks and Recs. And Roxanne, I think is going to be on your agenda for next month. So all your tree questions, save those, and she'll be here and present her programs. And also, I approached, it turns out, I get every month, I would get a comment on that storage, construction storage area by, right here by where you guys are meeting at, at the park, right where you drive in, right? And how it's going to sunset. And so that's what I talked. And so Laura Thielen will come to the November meeting. She's the director of Parks and Rec, and talk about that and talk about the plans and how they finish that up and when they can sunset that. I told her, it can't be just a perpetual place there. We've got to do it. She said, oh, yeah, we have plans to do that. So those reports will be coming to you. That's why I reached out to them. There was another question about 2779 Wailei Avenue, the Pahoa Ridge Development and that project. And it was really talking about safety, car safety and such. And our DTS said that that's really, that particular area is under the state jurisdiction. Plans and studies would be submitted to DPP for review of that project as it comes along. But you know, if there's something in particular that you would like us to send to the state jurisdiction, please email me, and I'll always pass it on. I don't like to just say, hey, it's the state, so let's, you know, that's the end of my responsibility. I'll always take your concerns and place them to the departments that have them or to the departments in the state. Those were all the items that were reported to me. I'm open for any questions or comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the in-house community members? All right, how about online community members? All right, how about online community members? Okay, how about, um, oh Daisy? Okay, hi Daisy, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, thank you Director Pocky. Um, I attended the DTS Complete Street Rehabilitation of Kilawea Avenue from 18th Avenue to, I guess maybe by Wilson School. Uh, there's two big major flaws with that. They're going to try and convert two traffic lanes on each side of the road into one lane. The trouble is that, don't forget, city buses, there's four routes that travel from 18th to Pohua, Pohua to Wailei is five routes, one route from Wailei to, uh, Wilson School. And I don't know how people are going to be able to, um, be able to overtake the rubbish truck on Mondays and Thursdays and the city buses. And even the, uh, first responders, I don't know how they're going to be able to go around that area on Kilawea Avenue, even though the lanes are, are wide. And two, their own picture shows that Kahala School is a tsunami evacuation zone. So I don't see how people in that area are able to escape should a tsunami hit Hawaii. So those are two big major concerns under rehabilitation of Kilawea Avenue. So that needs to be taken back to DTS and start over because it makes no sense to use bicycle lanes to, instead of using, um, traffic lanes for people to go in and out in that area. So, um, um, that's a, I don't know when the next meeting is, but those are two big concerns and two big ones that should really be looked into because it makes no sense to take over a parking space or a traffic lane, two traffic lanes to one, just for bicycle lanes. Thank you.
Any comments? All right, go ahead.
Speaking of the area that you mentioned.
Oh, can you please, um, state your name and?
My name is Franklin Chung and I'm speaking as a, just a private citizen, although of full transparency, I'm now with the City and County Honolulu Tre- Treasury Division. The area that you mentioned, that the whole ridge development is nearby is the bottom of Wailei Avenue and then going down to, uh, the Lower Campus Road and the on-ramp to the freeway west. Last year during the winter and the rainstorm, uh, there was something that was horrible that happened on the embankment, um, that separates the, the on-ramp and the freeway. The grass got so tall that it completely blocked the views of cars that were trying to get on the freeway. Um, so every car had to stop. I mean, it was just unbelievable. And I, it took forever for, uh, whoever was responsible to cut that grass so that there's, uh, safe viewing by, you know, the on-ramp drivers and the, uh, cars on the freeway. So I hope it, I hope that would never happen again. Thank you. Whether it's, uh, city responsibility or the state responsibility.
All right, thank you. Any other, um, questions or comments for the mayor's rep?
I just hope that they can stay around for the presentation that we have tonight on the, uh, from the committee meeting on the Pohua Ridge project that's coming up on the agenda.
On the which ridge?
Pohua Ridge, the new development proposed.
Um, you know, there, we, that presentation was canceled tonight.
She's here, Michelle is here.
Is that under the committees?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you mean the committee report?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yes, of course. Any board members and then let's move on to the elected officials. All right, I don't think there's any more questions. So let's move on to our state legislator is a representative from Les, Hera's office here? Okay, nobody. How about, uh, District 19 Bert Kobayashi? I know he sent us his newsletter. Okay, and then we have Representative District 20 Jackson Samaya.
Sayama, hi.
Oh, Sayama, thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Evelyn Hee and I'm the office manager for Representative Sayama, who is off-island today. Uh, he has to share a reminder to the announcement of our town hall meeting, which will be held on Thursday, October 19th, 7:00 PM at Hokulani Elementary Cafeteria regarding the Wahapahila Ridge State Park. There's two topics of discussion that will be, um, that will be presented and the first is the, uh, disc golf proposal to install a permanent eating hole golf, hold disc golf course. And the second topic is the wildfire prevention on the ridge. DLNR and the Board of Water Supply have both been invited to attend. So that's all I have and so please let me know if you have any comments or concerns that you would like me to bring back to the representative. Thank you.
All right, any questions from the in-house audience? Any questions from the online? Any questions from the board in-house? And any questions from any board members online? Okay, no questions, we'll go on to Senator Stanley Chang, District 9.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, board, hi, everyone. Um, so for this month's updates, um, and I'll put all the links in the chat right now for everyone online. Um, our October newsletter is posted and you can find it at SenatorChang.com. Senator Chang is hosting a housing conference, it's over Zoom on November 15th, starting at 9:00 AM and more details will come soon, come soon for registration. Um, and in the links in the chat, you can also find, um, the website to sign up for Senator's Housing Newsletter for news regarding housing in Hawaii, in the US and, um, across, and internationally. And then we also wanted to share that, um, the Hawaii State Public Library offers a free public library card and, um, you can sign up online and then just visit your local library to pick it up. And then another update is that over $20,000 has been secured for upgrades at the Ahi Hospital and this was in addition to money secured or released, um, from the governor last month for the Diamond Head State Monument. I'm sorry, an additional $250 has been secured in addition to the monies released last month. And then finally, if you have feral chickens around, the City and County of Honolulu is extending its Cajun disposal service to private property owners and you can visit sandwichal.com for more information.
All right, thank you. And do we have any questions from the in-house audience? No, um, then we will go to, I think it's Daisy, is your hand up?
Thank you, my chair. Hi Teresa, uh, my question to, um, Senator Chang is those housing, um, webinars etc. means that he has, are they really for affordable type or is it just to, um, get additional people and increase the density of Oahu? Because it seems it's still, um, he has a lot of seminars, I know, but the question is, is it really to affordable living that people need rentals that they can afford? Cause a lot of them move out of state or is the focus on somewhere else? Appreciate it, thank you.
Um, so there's a lot of different topics that, um, come up in the housing webinars. Most of them relate to financing housing projects. So, um, there's a lot of other cities in America that have tried different ways to, uh, rely less on tax credits and more on other ways of financing like, uh, private activity bonds or, uh, through, yeah, through other methods. So it's a wide range of topics that he covers. And then regarding your, um, comment about, I think what housing he supports, he does believe that increasing housing density is one, um, one method in solving the housing crisis.
Okay, um, in addition to that, is that what the, um, does he piggyback with the governor is saying about affordable housing for the state?
Could, sorry, could you elaborate on what the governor is saying about?
Remember the governor has that executive order about affordable housing for the whole, um, state? Is that what, uh, Senator Chang's goal is or is it completely different? Cause you mentioned financing, but also we need to have affordable housing for people that live here.
Yeah, um, I think his, his biggest, um, method is increasing density. So that, like, there's less, um, infrastructure costs and whatnot. Um, he does think that one method to solving the housing crisis, um, possibly could be through the emergency proclamation, but that's not the answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I, any, if there's no more questions, we're going to move on to the Sid. Oh, Michelle, sorry, didn't see you. Michelle?
Aloha Teresa, uh, Michelle Mattson here. I just want, uh, to get a little more, uh, detail on the money that was released for Diamond Head. Do you have more information on that?
Do you have more information, like you wanted to share or?
No, I'm asking you if you have more details on the funds that were released for Diamond Head.
Um, yes, I do. I can, I can put a link in the chat for everyone regarding to the, the governor's release.
Very good. Uh, that, that would be great because the Diamond Head State Monument Foundation would be very interested in that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I don't see any other hands. Now we will go on to the city council and Chair Waters. I see Amanda's on the line.
Yes, hello everyone. Um, Amanda Zepeda here again for Chair Waters. Um, he's out of town at Sister City event this week. So I have a couple of updates. One thing I wanted to touch a little bit more on is the Kaimana Beach Shower Improvement Project. We received some complaints this week about, um, some confusion about the opening date and there was a, a blessing that sort of was announced at the last minute and a lot of folks either didn't know about it or weren't invited to it. Um, so I, I just have a couple of, a couple more things I wanted to share. There's always al- also concerns about drainage, um, that there was still some water pooling. Um, there's, was concerns or questions about whether there's going to be additional landscaping. So I have some information from the Department of Facility Maintenance, um, Stormwater Ranch. So he, um, this is Randall Wakamoto, he reported that the contractor's punch list, um, is actually completed. There was confusion of whether it was, there were still items left, um, but it has been completed. The only thing left is, um, the contractor is ordering and turning over some additional spare parts to Department of Parks and Recreation that were specified in the contract. Um, and then beyond that, no further work is required on the contractor's part. Um, in terms of the landscaping, he said there was an earlier concept plan to put in additional native plants, soils and gravel near the shower area in coordination with the Surf Rider Foundation to create something they refer to as a rain garden to allow for runoff to be absorbed into the ground even further and to add some aesthetic value. However, apparently the champion of that effort from the Surf Rider Foundation has left the organization and didn't assign an alternate replacement. So as a part of the initial discussion and arrangement, the foundation was supposed to accept responsibility for maintaining the rain garden, but because of the changes in personnel, it was elected to replace the area with traditional grass, um, Bermuda grass to be in line with the Department of Parks and Recreation's current maintenance operations. Basically as a result, what we see is what we get and there are no additional plans for additional landscaping at this time. Um, he said the contractor did resolve the ponding issue that was pointed out during the final inspection to fix the gradation of the shower concrete pad that would allow the shower runoff to appropriately flow toward the outer perimeter away from the pad. The current issue that's being pointed out is ponding that occurs at the outer edge where the previous pavers were installed. Um, he said it is expected that there will be some ponding of the water in this area because these are the low points of the shower facility and that eventually the water will be absorbed into the subsurface because the pavers are designed to allow water to flow through them. Um, and then if any accumulated water that exceeds the levels of the perimeter pavers, those are designed to overflow into the surrounding landscaping, AKA grass, or to be directed into the underground infiltration chamber systems that are located outside of the shower area. Um, but as a follow-up, they are double checking with the manufacturer and the local representative, uh, regarding the previous pavers, just to verify that they are performing as intended and designed. Um, and the last point is that Chair Waters' office did make a request to Department of Parks and the Administration for a follow-up blessing. Um, basically, we just thought it was really important. We know this is, has been a, a long-awaited project. And we know it's really important to a lot of people and they really want to take part in the celebration, so they have agreed, um, thankfully, and they've proposed the, the follow-up sort of more formal blessing for next Tuesday, um, the 17th at 11:45, that's still tentative. They're basically just checking to see who's available and just giving us an opportunity to get the word out. So that is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, the 17th, that's next Tuesday at 11:45 AM. And if you have any further questions or, um, you know, want to be notified if that's confirmed, we are happy to report back up. I will send a note to Chair, um, once we get that confirmation back from DPR. So the next item I want to talk about briefly is that industrial stockyard on Kapahulu Avenue that we've talked about, um, many times now, that sort of ugly eyesore, um, with black tarp, you know, around the, the fencing area there. Um, so I followed up Department of Planning and Permitting, who issued the temporary use approval, um, and it actually did expire back in January, January 31st of this year. Um, so I'm not sure why they're still there. Um, but DPP is sending out an investigator to the site, um, because any work that's being done there now is basically not compliant with, with the permit or the law. Um, also, the Department of Parks and Recreation issued a right of entry for that staging area, which expires in five days on the 17th. So we are hoping to see that whole area, you know, dismantled and, and removed and restored, um, hopefully soon. So I'll, I'll, I'll report back as soon as we have more information. I did send the full response to Winston earlier today, happy to share that with anyone else who's interested in seeing it. And then really quickly, just to touch on the issue of Waikiki parades, um, we're definitely still working on it, it's not forgotten. Um, our office is working on the draft bill in coordination with Department of Parks and Recreation. Um, and basically, the Office of Council Services, our city attorneys had some questions and comments on the, uh, first draft of the bill that they sent back to us. Um, some amendments were made to address those comments and questions and it's now back with, uh, OCS again for additional review. So, um, once we have that draft all, all fine-tuned and worked out, we'd be happy to come back to both Waikiki and Diamond Head Neighborhood Boards, um, to solicit additional feedback on that. And then I just have two community requests, um, updates. There was, um, some obscene graffiti reported on the stop sign located at Paki Avenue and Pony Moy and the DFM was supposed to have replaced that stop sign, um, by last Friday. So I hope that that's been completed. Um, if you happen to notice that it's, it's not been, please feel free to let me know. If you happen to notice that it's it's not been, please feel free to let me know. And then we did submit two requests that we received. Constituent requests an in-street crosswalk delineator in the Paki Avenue crosswalk near Noella Street to alert drivers of pedestrians crossing in that unsignalized intersection. Additionally, the constituent requested the removal of that chain to allow wheelchair users to utilize the crosswalk and just enter in the park from that section without having to go all the way around. So those are two requests that are pending with Department of Transportation Services and Parks and Rec. And as soon as we have information back on that, we'll be happy to report back. And with that, that's all I have this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them or or take them back for next month.
Any questions from the audience in house? Any questions from the online audience? Kara?
I just have a community concern that I wanted to share. Is it okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to show that I've been a resident of Kapahulu for forty years and the traffic congestion and safety has gotten worse after the Nalpaka shrubs were planted, which eliminated the right turn lane at the corner of Rainbow Drive. As a result, cars get backed up on Kanaina Avenue since there is only one lane to turn left or right on to Kapahulu Avenue, while customers drive in and out of a very busy Rainbow Drive in. The ideal resolution would be to replace the shrubs with the original right turn lane. But if that is too costly, then to relocate the shrubs and plant grass. Due to the understaffing of the city crew, they have not been able to keep up with the overgrown shrubs, sometimes growing as tall as a stop sign and is a big safety concern for both drivers and pedestrians, especially children whose height is overshadowed by the growth of the vegetation. In fact, most of the time, the shrubs are so overgrown that the visibility is blocked even for SUV drivers, making it even more difficult to turn onto a very busy Kapahulu Avenue. In addition, recently, there have been homeless people living in the shrubs with rubbish scattered all around the area and smell of feces and urine permeated the area. Pictures of these concerns have been submitted to Tommy Waters' office. For about ten years, my neighbors and I have been trying to resolve these concerns as it was first brought up to Ann Kobayashi and then to Calvin Sei and now Tommy Waters. Hopefully, there will finally be a safe, long term resolution to these safety concerns. And based on the minutes from last board meeting, it says that the issue will be voted on by the board. That's what was left. So hopefully, there's a long term resolution to this situation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kara. Thank you for coming tonight and for joining us. We really appreciate that. So yeah, yes, as I as I mentioned to Kara previously, we did submit that request to Department of Facility Maintenance. And basically, they would want the neighborhood board to weigh in on that as we previously discussed. So if if this is something that you folks agree to, removing the Nalpaka and and possibly replacing it with just some, you know, low groundscape grass, nothing, I mean, other ideas. You know, we would appreciate you taking that up and 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 voting on it and making the decision so that we can try to move forward with some type of solution.
Oh, who who was muted, Kara? Kara, you were muted. Do you want to respond to that? Can you unmute yourself?
Sorry, were you able to hear my explanation?
Yes, we heard your entire explanation. We just didn't know if you were responding to Amanda again.
Oh, so yes, I agreed to having it removed and planting grass only because it's not been able to maintain its overgrowth and there's homeless people congregating in the shrubs. I we just couldn't believe it. I mean, living in the shrubs there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we go on to Michelle?
Thank you, Arlene. Thank you, Amanda, for your excellent report tonight. I have a brief question about Resolution twenty three one sixty three, establishing a selection advisory committee to assist the council in the appointment of the Director of Council Services and appointing the members of that advisory committee. I I don't understand why this is needed. Jim Williston has been excellent all these years and I'm sure he would want to continue. So why is there this effort? Or is this just a requirement that council has to go through?
Thank you. I I don't, April is our resident expert on that. But I do know because I asked her why we're doing this. And I agree with you, Jim is great. He's he's so, you know, so helpful, so important. He's been there forever. He knows everything about everything. But it is, I guess, a formality. Every six years, it has to be done. So I can't say what the result is going to be, but I I do know that it's just a formality.
Thank you so much. I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Member Boidle?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I wanted to note the, I recall the concern from the our neighbors at our meeting last month about the tall bushes around Rainbow Drive. But I noticed about a month ago that all those bushes have been cut down to about three feet high now, about a month ago. And there doesn't seem to be any problem with them right now. So I wonder if this is just a concern about what problem might occur in the future if they're not kept trimmed that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I I think the issue that's being raised is that it's an ongoing challenge to get DFM to maintain it regularly. So this, you know, is a recurring situation where once it it gets tall enough, we have this, you know, situation happening again, not only with the homeless living there and and activity going on, but really it's a it's a traffic obstruction issue as well. And so I think the requester and others have also suggested if we could just remove that problem and just replace it with low groundscape, this isn't something that we're going to have to keep chasing after every time it happens. And I hate to say it, but DFM just has so many responsibilities and tasks. They really can't keep up with it as well as we would all like them to. So I think it's really something worth considering. If you do want to find a a more long term solution to that issue, especially for traffic safety, yeah, you know, it might be something worth considering.
Any other questions or comments? Or Amanda? We have a guest speaker, a contractor that was involved in the showers implementation at Kaimana. And he's willing to give, I hope, a little presentation and take any questions that we might have. And it's Randy.
Good evening. Actually, Amanda answered all the questions. So she was the one that I was engaging with. So thank you so much, Amanda, for passing on that information. I'm Randall Wakamoto. I'm from the City and County Department of Facility Maintenance, our Stormwater Quality Division. I'm the program administrator. So we were responsible for managing that project at Kaimana Beach to install that shower, which essentially, when working with the Parks and Recreation Department, we had three goals. One was to conserve water. Two was to make it accessible. And then three was to ensure that it was helping to protect the environment. So I think we met those goals. What we did talk about was, and we do apologize, there was a little bit of that miscommunication. And when we did make the shower available, which was last weekend, and that's when the mayor had made an appearance and a video announcement. Because of that, we are working on the Department of Parks and Recreation, through the mayor and also the mayor's communication team, is rescheduling a more formal announcement and opening ceremony of that shower. And as Amanda mentioned, working it through Chair Waters' office as well as to the Neighborhood Board through Linda Wong, that we're going to be, looks like they are going to be scheduling, hopefully, next week, Tuesday, as Amanda mentioned, at eleven forty five to do a more formal type of opening ceremony. In the meantime, I just wanted to share that we are also working on additional shower improvements along that stretch of Waikiki Beach. So there is a total of eleven showers that are operated and maintained by the City Department of Parks and Recreation. And currently, we were starting on the far east side, which is at Kaimana Beach. We are working now our way towards the west direction. So this is what we refer to as showers number seven through ten. We are have a design. The unfortunate thing is, in the last few weeks, we were notified from the State Historic Preservation Division that we're going to have to conduct what is referred to as an archaeological inventory survey. So that's going to add a little bit of delay on our project in order to get a contractor to come out, do some test pits, and also have archaeologists at the site to observe and see if there are any kind of cultural historical impacts. So that's something that we're looking at possibly deferring that project for at least a year before we can actually go out to construction. So likely, it's going to start sometime in twenty twenty five is what we're anticipating. And I can share a map with you if you want. So there are those total of eleven showers that we're working on. And we're targeting right now for showers number seven through ten. And then in the meantime, we've also secured some, just some seed money to start the design and planning and design for what is referred to as shower number six, which is the one of the police substation along Waikiki.
All right, any questions? From the audience and any questions from the online audience? Any board, Margaret?
Now that you've done the one, are they all going to be so costly? I mean, they were almost, it was almost five hundred thousand dollars for one shower.
I mean, well, you recognize that what we want to try to provide is something that is tamper resistant, that is going to be durable, that is something that's going to last, and also still providing the services that the public would want to see. It is, you know, because it was just one shower, obviously, the cost does come up a little bit. But we're hoping to package those showers so that we can do showers number seven through ten, like I mentioned, and hopefully, the cost does come down. But they are using things like stainless steel parts. And of course, that is very expensive in order to make it durable because of the location. So we do recognize that, but however, we're trying to do it as best as we can within the budget limitations.
I think that you're going to have to put a security guard around it because I don't know how that, I mean, people are upset about the shower. But when they find out how much it costs, it's going to be even worse. But there shouldn't, it shouldn't cost that much. It shouldn't cost half a million bucks for one shower.
No, we understand. And, you know, it is unfortunate. It is going up the cost. We can see that the construction costs are definitely rising, especially we actually experienced a little bit of delay because of the shipping costs and being able to get the materials and parts here. But yeah, we do recognize that as well.
Okay, any other questions online? I I do have a question in person. I'm Arlene Velasco. I'm not only a board member here, but I'm also an active volunteer with the Surf Rider Foundation. So I was asked to review the plans for your showers, it was seven through eleven. And I so I was looking at the plans pretty carefully. And I just wanted to mention that besides the the change in sea level rising, you know, I have been out there surveying what the drainage situation is for all those showers at different tide levels. And when we have our king tides, you can actually see the sea actually coming up into the pad of some of these showers. So expecting them, it's unfortunate with this situation, but expecting the groundwater right now or the ground to absorb the shower water is probably not a valid assumption with what's happening on our island.
No, thank you for that comment. And actually, thank you. We actually are putting together a response to that.
Okay, thank you.
Then we went through the the showers number seven through ten. We did go through the process of posting and asking for comments and feedback from the various constituents. But we do understand also that, you know, by allowing for water to infiltrate and like you just mentioned, is the sea level rise. So we are looking to see if there are going to be any impacts. We haven't seen anything. And as far as we have understood, we haven't seen any of the where there could be possibly any type of environmental impacts to the the beach areas, except for in areas where we can see the direct discharge of the shower runoff going directly into the beach areas. In that situation, we've been made aware that there could be some elevated levels of whether bacteria or other chemical constituents. And so that's the one that I mentioned at the police substation location, where the state has been doing some monitoring and they did see some little elevation of some of the bacterial counts. So that's one of them that we are looking at. But I think the suggestion was to see if we could somehow tie it into the sanitary sewer system to avoid the water from going into the ground, which is what we are considering at that shower number six at the police substation. The problem with that is when you do that, you have to start putting on other things like a roof canopy over it because you can't allow any rainwater from getting into that drain because the sanitary sewer system is only meant for wastewater. In addition to that, because of the location where it's at, it's going to likely require some kind of a pumping system, like a pump station. And when we're doing that as well, we're going to have to add on things like grinder pumps and being able to prevent any of the sand from getting into the sanitary sewer system. So just to address some of the comments that came in earlier is, by doing all of that, it's going to definitely increase the cost to be even more expensive than what you're seeing at these open.
Right. But our our tourism and our water is is so important.
We do recognize that that is very important. And that's why we're going to put in the time and effort to look at that shower number six at the HPD's substation because we do recognize that that one definitely has a major impact to the receiving water.
All right. The there was one other question I had regarding the showers. And it had to do with, I think I'm getting tired. I it can wait. Let's see, it was, see if I wrote it down. Oh, the flow. I've had complaints from constituents about the the current low flow shower head. And their concern is not even getting the sand off. The concern is, you know, we have some staff in our waters. People have gotten staff infections from swimming in our ocean. And especially like at Kaimana Beach, I know personally of a few people who've gotten sick there. And the concern is that if you don't have enough flow of water immediately to rinse off the water, that they could get an infection. Now, you know, I mean, they could go home and shower right away as well. But again, if the goal is to conserve water, I'm not sure that double showering does that either. I don't know if you have what your thoughts are on that.
Like I mentioned earlier, one of the major goals was to conserve water because of all the, you know, the situation that the whole entire island of Waukau is facing. And we do know that that is something that, as a city, we want to do our part to conserve water as best as we can. And we do recognize, and even the Department of Parks and Recreation have reported that because of these improvements that they're doing at their shower, they've seen significant reductions in their water usage and which is really contributing to helping to preserve our our natural resources. We do want to make sure that people are reminded that these showers are really meant for just rinsing. It's not really for showering. There is a shower actually located near within the Waikiki Adatorium. It's an indoor shower facility. So if people are more concerned about that and being able to do a full rinsing and maybe showering to even possibly using like something like soaps and shampoos, that would be the more appropriate where it's indoors, it actually gets piped into the sewer system. But, you know, not something where we're just putting it out in the open where people can just rinse off. And we're not encouraging anybody to use that type of way to shower on. of way to shower on.
Has there been any, with that in mind, has there been any consideration to how you do prevent people from soaping up? We all see it.
There's not a really good way. We can educate people, we can do as much as we can by posting signs, we can try to, you know, it's, it's more of a monitoring thing, but it's not as though there's gonna be policing or enforcement to do that kind of thing, so I think we kinda rely on the public to kinda help remind others that when they see them doing those kind of things, that's just kinda nudging them and saying, you know, that's really not appropriate. We've seen that happen in other areas where people see that happening, and they've kinda told people that you really not, should we not be doing that kind of things here, because it's not really designed for that purpose.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, thank you for coming, really appreciate it.
And I'll share you with the, the map.
All right, so the next would be presentations. What? Oh, yes, oh, I'm so sorry. Councilman Kelvin Say.
Good evening, and thank you very much. I'll be very brief, my report is in the link, is number one. Amanda did a great job, is number two, and number three, Mr. Waukau satisfied the questions that you folks all have. But I did wanna share with the residents of St. Louis Heights that there is an issue in regards to a monster home on, I believe, fourteen twenty-one, fourteen thirty-one, Allen Castro Street, and DPP is looking into it on behalf of the residents. Then we have the study that was adopted by the council, but this particular study was a traffic study from First Avenue of Wyllie all the way up to Twelve Avenue, to see what could be done in regards to the traffic flow in the mornings and evenings, the parking on the street, the visual sites as far as looking at the stoplights, the lighting, the striping, and the alignment of some of our lanes. Other than that, I can share with what Ms. Kara said, that I did get a call from one of our constituents also in regards to the overgrown hedges and rainbow driving, and I believe DFM did a great job cutting. But if you folks all recall, in the report, it does say that you could, you folks do not make a decision as far as what Winston wanted you folks to do. But I apologize on behalf of DFM as far as infighting, and did cut the knuckle. The question will be, as a resolution, do you folks wanna retain the knuckle? Or not real grass, but I think we have that artificial gra- grass, because I don't know who's gonna be watering the natural grass at that intersection. And that's some of the issues that, that were brought up. And finally, uh, for Julia and I and others of St. Louis Heights, there is that homeless problem we still have at the St. Louis Bridge. And I'll be happy to ask any questions you folks may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the in-house audience? Um, do you wanna go up to the microphone? Thank you.
The council has already passed that bill fifty-two. You, you guys did approve it. The mayor has not signed it into law yet.
Well, I'm really happy, because let me educate all the members and the residents. The bill was introduced, and it did pass first reading, where we had the discussion. After first reading, the building goes to a committee that will be addressing that particular measure. At that time, on the second reading, you may have a public hearing, we have a public hearing much more, to get the input from the general public authority. And finally, you have the third reading, which is a full council, where you can also propose amendments or revisions to what was drafted by the committee. So yeah, it was introduced, it passed first reading, and I believe, if I can stand corrected, tomorrow, can you call me? I think I did go over all these bills that I have for next week's council committee public here. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Sorry, this is Janelle from Councilman Say's office, can he repeat the bill number?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, okay.
Right, is it five-two?
It's kind of, there is an identical bill fifty-two, which is on bullying, that was also passed, but for some strange reason, there's two bills that have the same number.
It's probably a House bill and a Senate bill, no?
Well, they go five years, so every year, they have the, they start from number one, and then, so it'll be like bill fifty-two, twenty-twenty-two, fifty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
But we'll go and check it out, and you can give us a call, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any, I think we have Margaret.
What is the description of the bill? We don't know what you're talking about. And also to number two, what action are you taking on the monster home on Allen Castro?
I'm working very, very well with Mr. Newman, who's the owner of the property that is adjacent to the monster home whereby Mr. Newman has granted that particular new private owner that he sent to his driveway. So it is now going to the zoning board of appeal, because he has appealed what was approved by DPP. And at this point, because it's in litigation, I can't say anything more, but I have been very active in working with Mr. Newman on this particular measure.
Was it approved by DPP, and are they building according to whatever was submitted?
That's where our good friend is saying it is not being complied with what the.
Who's our good friend? Who's our good friend?
Mr. Newman.
I don't know who Mr. Newman is.
He's the owner of fourteen twenty-one.
Is that the one that's next door, or the property, subject property?
Yes, yes.
And what's bill, the bill that you were talking about, bill fifty-two, I think it was?
I don't.
Oh, is that the monster home building? I just think I just got it from Amanda.
Or, okay, thank you, Amanda. Detached dwellings.
It's, you know, I mean.
Margaret, there's so many measures that come before the council, and we're just given a certain period of time to address these issues, but more importantly, we can schedule a hearing or discussion as an informational briefing, but then, the council has, as far as committee members or committee chairs of respective committees, have only one hearing a month. And then you have one full council hearing a month. So that's where I think for the new person that's gonna be, you know, the executive director for the Office of Council Services.
Can they stop the construction if it's out of line?
I believe they can, because it is being appealed as far as to the zoning board of appeal.
Do you know who the, who is the, who is, if it's not private information, who's the owner or the developer of the property? Is it the same people that have done other neighborhoods?
No, no. I don't know the person, but he's been doing, putting up that wall that you see on Allen Castro Street.
Did you stop it?
Well, we've been asking the Department of Planning and Reporting to do their best in their investigation and their inspection. If no one's hold that particular point in time in the afternoon, how do you talk to that particular person? And that's the one we have, you know, as far as all the other measures that we are trying to address, but we are following up, and we are on top of it already, and we'll get a better response once Mr. Newman goes to the zoning boards of appeal. Okay?
The neighbor. The neighbor has to go to the zoning board of bills, okay?
Okay, um, all right, next is Linda Wong.
Thank you. I apologize, um, the MAC, WebEx, they have all kinds of problems, and it just came out with another new program, so all this time it took me to get through. Calvin, I asked you last meeting to please bring a list of the, um, homes that the city has provided for the homeless. You said that you'd bring it this month.
Oh, that, I apologize, I think, Janelle, we didn't follow up on that when I made the request that I was gonna provide Linda the listing of the homeless shelters that we may have in the county of Waukau. So we can get that.
That would be nice, but actually, what I wanted was that with all this building and construction and new buildings, what shelter, not shelters, but what homes have you built for homeless?
That's a very good question. I don't know all the projects as, as far as this point in time, and I apologize that I, if you're asking me what I did for the.
The city county.
The city county, okay, that I can find out for them. And Janelle is listening, and that's where, you know, I apologize that, yeah, we're supposed to have a listing of all of the shelters that we have in the state of Waukau and the council of Waukau, okay?
Not, not just shelters, but new housing for people that are homeless.
Linda, I'm sorry, are you, are you referring to affordable housing that people?
That, that would be wonderful if they really have projects for truly homeless people, not with an AMI of zero, you know?
Well, yeah, well, let's, Janelle, we'll follow up on it, but let me just say this, if you wanna take care of the homeless, you would have to be subsidized by state, federal, and county resources. It is never gonna come from developers, is number one. Number two, we are trying.
You can have them, I'm sorry for interrupting, but you can make it that part of the condition of building new development. Remember, you built one, and it had the homeless in it on one side of the street, and the regular, non-homeless in it on the other side, so they didn't have a common entrance.
No, no, but who's gonna build the shelter for the homeless or the home for the homeless? It's not the developer, or you asking them for conditions?
But that's partially, doesn't make sense, because the developer, you guys tell them that they have to have so many units available to have an AMI of this or that or the other thing, so I don't see why you can't include that.
Well, I'm very, very fortunate, I'm not in the real estate market, and maybe Margaret or Marty will know more about why.
Yeah. I wanna interject that Angie had some inputs here.
Yeah. Um, hi, I was gonna say, so aside from being on this board, I also have, I don't, I don't know, I work for IHS, the shelters, and so I do have some knowledge of different things that are going on, but I was gonna say, I think the list that you're looking for, that would be Director Cruckey could also help you, because I know that they're doing a lot of different developments right now, and they haven't put out like RFPs yet for different providers, but I do know that they're looking right now, and even that the state, what is it, OHS, it's the Statewide Office of Housing and Homeless Solutions. Yes, so they also are looking at that, and so I think those two different sources, the DCS on the county level and OHS on the state level, they would have the information that you're looking for, and I do know on both sides, their website stays pretty current with the current projects that are available, both in development and in, what is it, not vacancies, but sort of vacancies. Does that kind of help answer your question?
It does help, except for the acronym.
Oh, sorry, the statewide office of housing and homeless, homelessness solutions, I think it's actually just homeless dot.
And that's James Poshiba.
Yes.
James Poshiba represents the state.
Yes, that's the state level, and then, under the county, that's the Department of Community Services.
And that's where I apologize, Linda, because the concept I had about homeless shelter was like the kahala.
Well, the, the thing is, the, the thinking has changed in the past years that, to house people, to get them off the street and to help them. So if the city council doesn't even know that, what that means, that's sort of a bad. So I, I invite you to understand, and then maybe you can still come through with the list, because now you know what it is.
I'll try to get the list, okay? Thank you.
Director Cruckey?
All right.
Uh, this is Malphia from Calvin's office. I just put in the chat box a list of the low affordable rentals that Director Denis Sisari Matzivar reported to the McCully Board last week, Anton was at that meeting too, but those are different, these are totaling almost, almost a thousand units from Waikiki Vista to McCully Holly, Miley, I mean, eight different low affordable rental city projects. So that's in the chat box, but about shelters, if you're talking about shelters, the transitional shelters, of the, the ones that the city operates is at Sand Island, that's about two hundred beds, and the other one at Katy Lagoon, the others are run by IHS and H3RC, they're a nonprofit organization.
Can you send me a list, please?
I have the list in the chat box, I just put it in there of the new.
All right, um, excuse me, we have Anton Cruckey who would like to add to this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your questions. You know, the homeless, housing homeless is, is a very complicated thing, but when you see an AMI of thirty percent in a building, that's the target that you're trying to achieve, that's when you can bring somebody in that's right from the street. Locking Hockley, that we just announced is gonna start in Chinatown, is thirty to fifty percent AMI, so they'll be homeless. There was a theory that said that if you put someone in a house and you surround them with services, that will end homelessness, and it just turns out that that works in some cases, but it doesn't work in all cases. So when, when we talk about these kahalas, we're really talking about something else that, that really is about a sense of community within a group, and maybe in some cases, they're transitional. I have twelve million dollars from congressionally-directed funds to build a couple of villages, so, you know, to your point, Linda, we do have, we do have plans in place there, I have a couple of buildings that we're gonna try to turn into, into these, these things where the, it's not like a shelter, I mean, people aren't coming and going, they live there, they're responsible to the community for their behavior, and you know, we're gonna work on it that way with them, and then, if we do something in, in your area, we need the support of the community to do it, because that's one of our challenges, is being able to actually do these things. But I've got about three or four of those on the plan, and Linda, you and I talked before, we can talk on the phone, and I can work you through all of how I look at it, I don't wanna take everybody's time here, but we try to come with as many creative ways as we can to have somebody be willing to engage the system, and then I'm constantly looking at the different resources, whether it be shelters, stabilization beds, or housing to service those decisions, and, and that's, that's what we try to do, very much like what you were talking about, Linda.
Okay, so also wanted to list and, and see what's been done lately and what's coming up, so I can see that we're making progress, because I know not everybody responds, but some people, like mothers with kids that are homeless, if they have wraparound services, they probably pretty much do comply. I know this is in the schools.
Right, last year, last year, we took CARESAC money, and we went out, because most of the HUD money we get now, you have to remember, the money's directed from, by governments, goes after the most chronic homeless, but last year, we put over ten million dollars into a project called Waukau Housing, now to specifically what you talked about, we went after people that wanted to be housed, and most of them were, were, you know, mothers with children, and so we ended up, our target was three hundred families, we housed three hundred and eight families, eight hundred and fifty people off the street that way, you know, vouchers that put them in, so, you know, we're attacking it from all those ways that, that you're, you're, you're realizing as well, you know, as strategies, yes.
So can I have a list?
A list, exactly what kind of list you want?
Facilities, how many have been added this year, the projections?
Yeah, it's a complicated thing, but I, I'll, I'll try to give you some information, Linda, and see if that, that, you know, satisfies what you want. I can't get too far, I can't get too far ahead of myself on projects, because then communities will, will, will react before I'm ready to present to them, right?
All right, you know, we're trying to get through our agenda tonight. Linda, can you perhaps email Anton and, and get your questions resolved?
Okay.
And then maybe put, you know, you post it to the Google Drive, and then everyone will have access.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Angie?
Yeah, I had one question for you, Councilmember Say, you talked about the road concerns.
Yes.
Along Wyllie, from like First Avenue. Yeah, so what happens now?
Now, the Department of Transportation. Now, the Department of Transportation Services will have to do a comprehensive study. And then they could incorporate it as a complete street or a safe street concept, but it is in the hands of the department, which they testified.
Okay, thank you. Because I know a few of us on the board were concerned about that, especially for us in St. Louis Heights, because I know anytime it rains, you can barely see the line. And weirdly, I think the safest time I ever saw the road was whenever the whole power grid went down. And everyone had to wait for people to cross the street. And so it was a community effort, but that should really happen when the lights are on.
Anything for the striping, right? As you make the left turn onto Wailei or on St. Louis Drive, you know, there's two, two or three different lines sometimes. That's a difficulty for me to see. So that's where the striping along with the reflectors are so important, but yes.
And will they also, in that study, um, I know that there's some intersections that are between lights and they just have like, I'm talking about in front of the Thai restaurant. That's just a crosswalk where you just have to hope that you can cross it. Would they be able to then, and they complete the street study, like analyze if they should have the, kind of like in Takako, how you hit the button and it lights up so you can cross? Would that be kind of the study that they could conduct?
That could also be part of the overall study that if it is completed, that could be part of the plan. But see, at this point, they're trying to develop a plan of what makes it safe for the residents, pedestrians. But I have to say this to all of you. I am, I'm very much concerned on what's happening with the multi-motor transportation. Our streets here on Oahu are so narrow compared to streets on the mainland. Once you took away your bike lane, people were complaining. You took away parking. But now, to me, the bike lane is obsolete. Why? You got the scooter? I don't, I don't know how to do that, uh, one wheel and one wheeler. You know, and then the electric bikes? Where is it all going? On the street or is it going to go the bike lane? That's a concern I brought up with Mr. Martin also. It's great that we have a multi-motor, but we have to expand our street. That would be the safest way. But at the end of the day, if there's a accident in the bike, it's liable to the city. Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, well, thank you very much. I mean, that, this whole moto in situation is a real issue for our community. Okay, so next we have, uh, we were going to have a presentation, but that has been pushed for the November meeting on the Pahoa Ridge Development. And then um, we have a new business and it's a motion in support of Representative Ed Case's letter to the FAA relating to tour aircraft flights. Has everyone had a chance to review that?
Uh, Chair, yeah, just so everyone knows, um, this was, I believe, uh, Chair Welch's request. So in the drive, there is a letter. And if a lot of board members haven't seen it yet, um, then maybe we would postpone this to the next meeting and then take a vote. Uh, but basically it's asking for, yeah, being in support of Ed Case's position on the FAA rules relating to
Yeah, I just saw it today myself and I did a brief reading and, and um, seemed reasonable to me, but uh, if no one else has, I wouldn't mind reviewing it again in greater detail. Okay, on, uh, online we have, I see a hand, but I don't see a person. Linda? Linda, we can't hear you. Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, I, I'll take it down. Sorry.
Okay, and then we have Michelle.
Thank you, Arlene. Um, I, I just want to say that Ed Case has really taken the community's concerns about tour helicopters to heart. He has been working very hard on this for many years. And his comments to the FAA are golden and I 100% support this because we had a lot of activity in our neighborhood board district, we still do, but it has calmed down. I think the tour operator, chopper operators are waiting to see what happens with the FAA. And they're keeping things kind of quiet until they can get their way and then they'll be back again, so.
Okay, Michelle, do you want to present the motion then?
I would like to move that this board unanimously support Ed Case's work on this.
Well, I don't think you can have people vote unanimously. We all have to vote individually, so.
Those are my, that, that's my recommendation.
Right, that's your recommendation. Okay, so uh, is there a second on a vote for this?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. And do we have enough uh, members present? We do. Okay, so are we going to conduct a vote?
I, I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, I'll open up for any discussion.
I'd like to uh, discuss it.
Um, can we just discuss it? I myself have not had a chance to look at it. Um, I was not aware, this is on my own part, that I didn't realize I was on the agenda today.
I, I haven't had a chance to read it either.
Right, so that's Okay, all right, um, any
The next question would be, is there a time limit for this? Because this is going through Congress right now. I mean, it's, I'm sorry, it's going through the FAA uh, process. Uh, so I'm, I'm not a, I'm, I'm not familiar with the scheduling on it.
Um, uh, perhaps we can ask Ed Case's office. Um, I don't think we have a rep with Ed Case here today.
No.
Um, okay, so there's two members here in house who would like more time and like to vote on it next month. Um, how about online? Margaret? Margaret, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Is it possible to put it in the chat, the link, his link? Dylan?
It's on the agenda.
The link is on the agenda?
Uh, yes. Under um, section new business, section nine.
Okay, oh. Can, can it be put in the link so we can just click it?
Yeah, we can't, we don't have 20 minutes for everyone to read it and then kind of think about it and see if they agree. So um, Linda, do you have, I know your hand is up.
Yeah, um, I'd just like to say that we've been, this neighborhood board in particular has written resolutions about this. Asked Ed Case, took the front on that, had meetings with other neighborhood boards, and it's been a big issue. Um, and that we, we were the leaders on this, so it's been a long time coming. Thank you.
All right, um, so do we have? Okay, so what, where do we go from here? Do we have a vote?
How many members do we have? How many uh, members do we have that are, um, can Dylan count?
Right.
Yes.
All right, everybody. Um, it looks like there's no more discussion right now. We do have enough board members here. Um, but let's, we can do a roll call though right now. Those of you that haven't had the time to review, you can take this opportunity to abstain. Um, and then we'll see where we're at. So the motion on the table is to support Representative uh, Ed Case's letter to the FAA relating to tour aircraft flights. Allen?
Abstain.
Boidle?
Aye.
Decker? Pacina?
Aye.
Knight?
Abstain.
Mattson?
Aye.
Burakawa? Merchi?
Aye.
Velasco?
Aye.
Whitezel? Bruce Wong?
Aye.
Linda Wong?
Aye.
Winston Welch?
Not here.
All right, the motion does not pass with seven in favor, zero nays and two abstentions. Uh, we can add this to the next agenda.
All right, it will be added to the November agenda. Okay, so next on the agenda are committee reports. The first one is environmental report. And um, it's under me, Velasco, and so I haven't had a chance this month to have, hold another meeting. I do plan on making it a focus to have a meeting about the cesspool issue around Diamond Head and hopefully this time get a lot more community members involved. Um, I hope to put out fly, legal flyers and any other methods to get the neighbors aware of the meeting. So that should happen. I'm going to hope for uh, the early part of November. And the next committee report is Parks and Recreation. Decker and Merchi?
I'm going to pass to, on to uh, planning and zoning that has something to do with the parks. Unless Decker has something to say. Parks are fine with the exception of one issue, and that is that the nighttime workers, and I've reported it to Laura Thielin, are taking off before cleaning out the bathrooms and leaving a mess for the people working in the morning. I've already reported it. That's the only thing I have to report on the parks.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, planning and zoning. Michelle?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have a report that has been posted on the uh, board drive. It's extensive. I'm going to be uh, reading some background here and then uh, providing some recommendations. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Committee met on October 5th to review the series of public concerns expressed at the board's monthly meeting on September 14th and other meetings within the larger community. Graphics and related links are included in the committee report posted on the board's online drive. The proposed high-rise is planned to be developed on a half acre parcel at the west end of Wailei Avenue along the curved approach to the H1 freeway and the King Street overpass. The regulatory zoning height limit is restricted to 150 feet, but the developer is seeking a 100 foot height increase to 250 feet for 211 rental units and 281 parking spaces within a parking podium. The proposed development amenities include a recreational pool deck and outdoor lounge deck, a fitness center and a community room and a rooftop recreation deck all uh, across from uh, the freeway on-ramp. The developer is seeking $55 million in fast track taxpayer funding from the Hawaii Finance and Development Corporation, HHFDC. An exemption, and he's also seeking exemptions from regulatory permits for the proposed 250 foot high-rise development comprised of studio, one bedroom and two bedroom units to be rented at 30 to 60% of the area's median income level or AMI. Some of the developers sought after funding and exemptions may not be approved. And should the HHFDC limit the HRS 201H public taxpayer funding and/or regulatory permit exemptions, the developer will increase the rental cost to 80 to 100% AMI. And if the developer does not receive the requested 100 foot building height increase, the $55 million in public funding and exemption from regulatory permitting, the developer will convert the proposed development to for sale market rate condominium units. If the proposed development is truly affordable for workhouse, workforce rental housing at 30% to 60% AMI, the added fees for maintaining a recreational swimming pool deck, an outdoor lounge deck, a rooftop deck, a fitness center and a community room together with the additional water fees would not be affordable for those in need of affordable housing. So the added amenities ultimately appear to be indicative of a market price plan. Regarding environmental impacts, prior to any consideration of this proposal, an in-depth soil study should be undertaken to assess the soil stability to support the proposed high-rise and parking podium at this location above the freeway to determine any unstable soil fill or infill within the or contiguous to the subject parcel and any potential effects on the US Army Corps of Engineers Alway Flood Control Project downhill and FEMA responses during disaster conditions. And this comprehensive soil study should be in an environmental impact statement specific to the proposed development. And the most overriding concerns presently expressed by the larger community center on cumulative community and regional traffic congestion and gridlock impacts from the proposed high-density development situated around the blind turn where Wailei Avenue merges with both the H1 freeway westbound on-ramp and the King Street freeway overpass, which is foreseen to have direct increased traffic and pedestrian safety impacts within the board's district. The developer conducted a traffic study, but this was during the COVID pandemic when there was minimal traffic. Further, the cumulative traffic congestion and, and gridlock impacts of the proposed development coupled with the traffic congestion and gridlock impacts merging into the Wailei Avenue westbound freeway approach from the proposed 50, 1,000 unit Kobayashi Residential Tower and high-rise parking development on Kapilani Boulevard have not been disclosed. So you've got, you've got major um, traffic being introduced from two directions to this one narrow point to get on the freeway. So the um, the online report is, is more detailed with several links referring uh, to um, and, and and confirming the community's concerns, uh, both the board's concerns as well as, uh, I'm sorry, the the concerns from community concerns presented to the board at the last meeting as well as those at uh, expressed at the Manoa Board, and there was only one presentation by the developer to the McCully Moili Eli Neighborhood Board. Um, we have asked for a presentation, uh, it's on the agenda for tonight and they are not present. Um, but we are under some time constraints here. So the recommendations, um, uh, this is more of a um, a summary with recommendations. Community residents are calling for any development at this location to be built within the city's established zoning requirements and green space policies. The developer's application was submitted to the HHFDC in September 2023. And the deadline for comments to the HHFDC from the city's Departments of Planning and Permitting and Transportation Services has been reported as being October 16th, which is next week. The HHFDC is then expected to render their decision in November. Prior to any consideration of this proposal, an in-depth soil study should be undertaken to assess the soil's stability, to support the proposed high-rise and parking podium at this location. And it is recommended that this comprehensive soil study should be made part of an environmental impact statement specific to the proposed development. Additionally, it's recommended that prior to any city or state agency consideration of the public concessions sought by the developer for the proposed development, a comprehensive independent traffic study should be required to be undertaken to disclose and remedy the existing present conditions of traffic and pedestrian risks and dangers together with determinations of the aforementioned cumulative traffic impacts projected for the dual developments merging into the westbound freeway approach and onto the freeway overpass. And the domino effect of increased traffic congestion and gridlock along this main artery along this main artery and the intersecting streets essential to the St. Louis Heights, Lower Wai'li, East Mo'ili'i, Kapahulu, and Diamond Head communities for necessary access to the H1 freeway on-ramp via Wai'li Avenue. Since there is going to be more discussion and we need to have a presentation from the developer, I would recommend that the board consider these recommendations carefully. Study the report and the links on the report. But in the meantime, I would also like to recommend that we send the concerns reflective of the larger community to both the city of Planning and Permitting Department as well as the Department of Transportation Services and the State Department of Transportation. Ed Sniffin because, the director, because that freeway approach is under state jurisdiction. And also because the HHFDC will be contemplating this prior to a lot of, well, possibly any further discussion on this pending the presentation from the developer. We might want to send the reflection of the community's concerns onto the HHFDC as well for, for their contemplation as they go through this process. So that's my recommendation.
Linda, I do have a question for you. You said that there was an October 16th deadline for the middle? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, that was what was reported to us, and I don't know if we have some of the other community members online. I did see, I did see Patty for a brief moment, I thought. But there she is. Could, could you fill us in Patty on that?
Sure. Thank you, Michelle. That was what I, I was told. Perhaps I know Councilman Say is, if he's still there in his office, have a little bit more insight. I actually met with his office. He coordinated a meeting with the DOT, the state. I think it's the City DOT Services. And from that meeting, I recall them saying that once the HHFDC application was submitted, they routed to the agency and I assume DPP and DOT are the agency for comments and it's a 30 day. So counting back to days, I think we came to conclusion that it was due on October 16th. If Janelle's there, if she can speak and correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I don't know the exact date on it, but I think that was about correct when we were looking at the calendar. But as far as the process goes, that is correct. HHFDC is the receiving agency. So DTS and GTT will be making comments, but they're not the approving agency for this specific project.
Okay, we have questions from Margaret and then Linda. Not Margaret, I'm sorry. It's Laura. Laura and then Linda.
Thank you. Hi, Michelle. Very good report. Thank you. A couple of things when I went to the Mo'ili'i Pahoa Ridge information, I asked the guy who's in charge. I said, aren't all of those amenities going to make for a gated community? He said, no, no, everybody requires them now somehow. And so he has, has to put them in. Of course, the only places I've ever lived have no amenities, so I don't know why that has to be. Second of all, very quickly, so if I jump around, it was unusual. The Waikiki Board in 2016 and 1977 all supported a bridge, but they did not support anything called the tower and the cable stay and the bulwarks over the canal. And for, and just to end it with this is that there is a land ordinance regulation. It says zero height all around the canal and all around Diamond Head. And so that's in the zoning camp that you're in also. So I just wanted to add that also. That's a really important thing, zero height. And if you ever see those things, ads on TV with blue somebody or the others, I think they are operating out of another planet or something. It's not really something that we're going to be doing. Thank you.
Okay, Laura, we're not discussing the bridge at this point. We are discussing the Pahoa, so-called Pahoa Ridge.
I just meant to get it into the time in which it was zoning. That's all I meant.
Well, this isn't a planning and zoning committee meeting. This is specific to this report. I'll take that under advisement for further discussion. Thank you.
All right, Linda?
Okay. I, this particular spot is right by the back gate of the UH. And it's just an accident waiting to happen. It's just, and it also defies all those height limits, all, you know, all the, they want to make so much housing that they preempted all the laws of planning and permitting. And it's dangerous there and plus it's right that that is a state road. So and they're all by the same developer. Ignoring the rules, going over the heights limits. And they're all happen to be around Mo'ili'i in our place. It's just stuffing people where there's any little bit of land. And I'm completely against all this because spread it around the island. Let's go out instead of up. It's like making us like rats in cages. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. So I guess the question I have for you, Michelle, what, what do you want to do to move this forward?
Well, I think we do need to respond to the community's concerns and give them the confidence that we are taking this seriously. And in fact, one of the recommendations from one of the participants, one of our own board members, Wendell Murakawa, at the, at the committee meeting was do everything we can to communicate with DPP and DTS and DOT and the HHFDC regarding the community's concerns now. So they'll be aware of them because they're not. This has been very quiet and, you know, if there was one board presentation and there were the concern centered on the traffic, in fact, regional traffic impact from Kai'ma'kei all the way to Makiki from this. And that was Makali Mo'ili'i's, some of the comments at that board meeting after a presentation. And that presentation link is also on the committee report. I encourage you to see that presentation because the, this is a partnership of two developers, one from the mainland and one fairly local. And they are building massive sky rises all over and, and, and complexes and all these are shown. And this was what their presentation was about. So that's just an aside. I think, to answer your question, Arlene, yes, I think my, my, I think a lot of people feel that and agree with Wendell's recommendation that we've got to communicate now. And the way we can do that is share the committee information, which has a lot of the reflection of the larger community in it, in the report. And just offer this as information for consideration.
So are you going to individually send out to all those state departments the report and make them aware of it?
I can definitely do that. DTS and DPP are very accessible. HHFDC, I'd have to find out who, who to send it to for their records. But it, it can be done and I think it can be done before this time, time limit expires.
Okay, I think Dylan input.
Yeah, just wanted to reiterate that, yeah, this is a hot topic and this will be, we will have a presentation on the next agenda. I believe Chris Lukar is the person that came at your August meeting just to announce, hey, this is what's happening. It's not necessarily in your neighborhood. That'll be the same guy that'll come back and give a full presentation. We'll have a discussion. And then if there's a motion or a resolution based on Member Mattson's report that is also in the drive, that could be prepared before the agenda goes out for November. So first we'll have the presentation. We'll let the community have discussion. We'll have the board discussion. Then, once that's over, we can move into board business. And that would be a resolution or motion, anything of action. So that, that could happen at that meeting, or we could push any action to December. So those are the two options.
Yeah, my, my concern is that if we, if there's a hard deadline of October 16th for inputs for this development, how does the work that this committee do, how is that going to get to these members that are, to these departments that are making a decision?
So we are stuck in a predicament. This, so we should not take action on this tonight because it's not duly noticed for the public. It just says, planning and zoning committee report, you know, proposed Pahoa Ridge development. It doesn't say what the proposed action may be. So an example of what a better agenda item for action would be is in their new business. It clearly says motion in support of this and that, and then here's a copy of the example. So in the future, we can do that, but there's nothing really for action. But any member of the board is also a member of the public. They can go and share their comments and anyone could share that report with the
Okay, so any, any one of us could, as an individual, take that report and send it to the different committees or departments, I'm sorry.
Yes, the same way that public testimony is taken. You can contact an agency that's involved in this and you can say, hey, this is how I feel about it. Do not speak for the board.
Okay, that's the difference. Okay, so I guess we all hear this and we can all act individually if we, if we feel the need to.
I, I would like to make, well, I guess I have a question about this because it is on the agenda. And the presentation was on the agenda and the people expected to have this taken up at this meeting. Unfortunately, we're kind of in a bind, but we do have information that is pertinent to this issue that is listed on the agenda. And I, I think that, and you're right, Arlene, we do have to be cognizant of this fast track, this fast tracking at this particular point. So because we have the material, we've had the committee meeting. Dylan, wouldn't it be, I think, appropriate for the board to consent that the report be shared with the departments as an informational document?
And would you be sending that as the committee chair?
I could.
Would be the representative?
I could.
So as the neighborhood assistant, again, I just advise that best practice is to be open. That's the spirit of the sunshine law. So just the example is, I understand, Michelle, that you said Pahoa Ridge is clearly listed on the agenda. But what's not listed is that this board will take this report and send it to these people because this is our support of this project, or it's actually the, this improvement of a project. So if you have a resident that said, hey, we're on this side of it, this is how we feel and we weren't apprised of this information. That's all I'm saying is there could be a complaint, but the board is, it's your board. You guys get to decide how you want to move forward. So a simple motion that says we want to send this report to these agencies, I'll take note of that and it'll be reflected in the minutes.
That sounds very reasonable. It is also listed on the agenda. Excuse me. Go ahead.
I would like
I, I do have
I second that.
Yeah, I moved, we send this report on to the appropriate agencies.
I second that.
I have a question.
You said, you did say that the developer made a presentation at our meeting. He did not. He signed off before he made a presentation.
Michelle, I have a question because I remember at the zoning meeting, we were talking about this. What's the November 9th meeting? Because I remember we were talking about HHFDC, but we weren't sure if that one is on the agenda. I don't remember if October 1 being prioritized, but the November 1 was prioritized.
Yeah, it, it's not clear, but what Tommy Waters said at our last meeting was also very confusing that it was going to the Planning Commission on November 4th. But I don't think it's going to the Planning Commission at all. Or at least it's at HHFDC now. The application was submitted in September. So, and, and so I, I think the dates are not clear. But under the circumstances, and I think that Patty from the Manoa Board has, has given us quite a bit of clarification on this, that there is a deadline. And that would be the October 16th deadline if, if that is still the case.
Okay. Do we want to, let's see, what time is it now? It's, it's approaching 8:30. So I think we need to come to a conclusion here. And so that the, we've had a motion and we've had a second. And so I think it's time we can vote.
Can we restate what the motion is? And also I do have a question, which is if there are different representatives for the different offices of, that are representing our area. Can we also just ask that, like, our concerns get carried too? Isn't that what normally happens at neighborhood boards?
Well, yeah, what worries, what Dylan brought up really does have me concerned in a legal issue. And not just legally, but for the general public. We haven't given our constituents, if anyone is pro-development, we haven't given them a forum.
But this does not, this is not a yes or no kind of situation. It is simply sharing information that has been obtained through various sources of community input. And there seems to be a, you know, a very clear direction of where the concerns lie that would warrant more scrutiny than just, you know, casual review. But we're, we're advisory. That's all we are. We're not, you know, we're not decision-making. We're not telling them what to do. We're sharing information and that's all this is.
Okay, so it, it appears that it's, we're kind of in a gray area, but it's probably okay as far as we're not going to say, state in that we are against it. Is that correct?
No, it hasn't, it hasn't come to that point yet.
Okay, so it's just informational at this point?
It's purely informational and it shows where the larger community is focused.
Okay, I, I mean, that seems reasonable to me. Okay, so that's the motion.
I can repeat the motion if you'd like.
Okay, Linda, how about you? Your input?
Okay, I moved that this neighborhood board or Michelle, send the informational packet from the committee meeting to all interested parties or department heads.
Okay. Michelle? Michelle, your hands up.
Oh. Sorry.
Oh, not Michelle. Margaret, I'm losing it here.
Sorry, um, just just FYI, the developer was online on one of our meetings, but he signed off before he gave a presentation. So there was no presentation given to her board.
Just to clarify, Margaret, um, yeah, I never meant to say there was a presentation.
Well, okay, you did.
Uh, no, what I said was Chris came at your August meeting. It's reflected in the minutes. He came during public concerns and he just gave a brief announcement about such and that there were future meetings coming up. That's what he said. That's not a presentation.
I didn't. I didn't hear any comments from Chris and.
Please look at the August meeting. The recording is on YouTube, but that's it. That clarifies that. Are we ready for a roll call?
Yes, we're ready for a roll call.
The motion is to send the informational packet to the interested parties. Alan.
I.
Boidel.
Hi.
Decker. Hacina.
Hi.
Knight.
Hi.
Mattson.
Hi.
Morikawa. Marchi.
Hi.
Velasco.
Hi.
Weitzel. Bruce Wong. One more time for Bruce. Linda Wong.
Hi.
And Winston Welch. Absolutely. Let me check one. Six, seven, eight. All right, I didn't hear from Bruce. I know that his mic is on, but it did pass with eight anyway. So congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. I I guess are we done with the planning and zoning?
I I see Patty's hand up still. Maybe she has something to add.
All right, Patty.
I think you're. Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Michelle, for your great report. I just wanted to clarify what I've learned so far. The October sixteen is a deadline for the agency to provide comments. And I believe next would be for HHFDC Board to meet. They typically typically meet on the second Thursday of the month, so on their calendar is November ninth. And public can submit testimony to them within forty-eight hours of the meeting start. Now, they don't post the agenda until maybe, I don't know, seven days with the sunshine law. So at this point, there's no agenda for the November meeting. But assuming that everything goes through, this Pahora Ridge should be on the November agenda. So that's the next deadline where HHFDC actually votes yes or no. I agree with what we're doing that, you know, as individual, we can definitely share the concerns with the board member. A list of the board member are available on the HHFDC website if anybody would like to send messages to them directly for questioning, and you can also appear at the meeting in person to testify for or against or asking question with them. And I believe after that, if they do vote yes to this project, they're going to move forward to the city council, which will be in the December. But I also learned that December they usually don't have a meeting. So and and the rule is if there's no action taken in forty-five days, it'll automatically be approved. That's what I've learned. Um, kind of the process. And I'm not against this development. I'm just asking for traffic solution. And also, if they don't need the hundred feet height variance, it will be less of a problem than it is now. And then they don't need to do all these some extra variance and all this stuff to build like a more reasonable building that's truly for workforce housing. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Patty.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, David.
Uh, yeah, I'm a Manoa resident with next Patty in a neighborhood, and I applaud you, all of you, especially Michelle, in terms of making their report. My background is I prepared the studies for the Director of Transportation in official responses to both county input on developments that affect state highways. And this particular project has tremendous issues on the impact for the traffic. It also has other issues that are having been announced, and I intend to announce it because yeah, analysis has to be shared with the public. And when I say public, I mean all the communities that are involved. There are three neighborhood boards and a fourth community is the University of Hawaii. That basically is being solid because their impact is is most sessional in terms of what happens on campus. But one other issue comes about and it's the height that building will overlook the entire athletic campus. You guys are familiar with the Contessa. Imagine the Contessa being right on that twenty thousand square foot lot. That's the visual impact that building will have if it's allowed at that height. And all the people will have full view of the athletic fields and games that go on. So there's there's a request that I made to the developer. I said, we need to see the check report that you're accepting from the agencies and putting it and submitting it to the agencies. So we can digest what actually they are agreeing to or what they're saying. One of the things was the ingress and egress to the facility. And one of my concern is that there's no warrant from from the DOT. It should be particularly in terms of how it's going to affect Waikiki Avenue. So we got more work to do. I'll be involved with Patty and attending the any hearings. So I applaud you guys for for doing what you just did right now. Honestly, I'm very impressed. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you for your input. We're all concerned about the traffic. Especially Kappa, oh, that that street would be greatly impacted. What was what would that do to our tourists going in and out of Waikiki? Crazy. All right.
Arlene, Arlene, I just I just want to briefly thank David. I I did see him testify on one of those links. And I would like to formally invite both Patty and David to be members of our committee for this particular item if they're willing, if they have time. It's an open invitation. Patty was extremely helpful at the committee meeting and we learned a lot from her. And David, I know we will from you as well. So you're more than welcome to join us.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, everyone involved. So the next, I think we're ready to go. The next subject on the agenda is the traffic and public safety. And is there anything that we're adding that that committee wants to report on?
No, just this this committee, planning and zoning, pretty much covered it.
All right, thank you very much.
Arlene, I I'd just like to mention that I think we need joint committee meetings on this particular subject. And and Margaret was present at the committee meeting and also contributed quite a bit of information. So I would encourage, at least for this effort, that it become a joint committee effort. If we'll if Margaret's willing.
Well, I don't see any. It's up to Margaret.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, that sounds like a a good, a good merging. All right, and then do you have any idea when your next meeting is or are you going to figure that out and give an announcement?
Uh, yes, we're going to have to see when dates pop up and be prepared. I think a great deal of the groundwork has actually been accomplished as much as possible. We need to see the presentation from the developer and ask him to stick with the specifics of the projects and provide questions, detailed questions during that presentation. We don't need to have a promotional for his, you know, his construction projects. We can actually stipulate that that we need specific presentation specific to this project and nothing else. But first things first, I think we'll get the information to the interested parties and then we will see which date is the most critical. It may come before our next board meeting. If it is November. Did you say ninth? Our meetings are the second Thursday. So I don't know if we will be able to even have a presentation by the HHFDC meeting.
Okay, all right. Well, if we will, we'll make sure it gets sent out. Okay, so.
It's the same day.
Okay. Okay, so the next agenda is reported board members attending other board meetings. Do we have any any board members who want to report?
I attended the Waikiki Neighborhood Board Meeting on Tuesday night and interesting, they're finally online, which is great. They had a vote and decided that they would keep it online to try and make sure that people, everybody was included. I do have an issue, though, trying to get on to online still, and hopefully Dylan can figure that out. It's difficult for people that are coming in to try and get on unless they register as a guest. But there were other issues that came up with what we're thinking about. I'm kind of overwhelmed with things. There wasn't, I guess the parades were a big deal. And they're going to, but Roger Martin and every and the city is going to be looking at capping some of them. There was one that was Oh, no, Grinds LLC that has two parades or two block parties in the next two months. That was a little questionable. It's a Waipahu restaurant that has taken they're going to be closing off the whole of Kalakaua for the whole afternoon to evening. And I don't understand why that's happening, but.
All right, well, that's kind of interesting. Okay, is there any other reports of any other board meetings? Okay, it doesn't appear to be. So the next would be the approval of minutes. And the minutes in question are February, March, April, and May of twenty twenty-three. And so and okay, May and June. So that wasn't done either. Okay, so it's all those minutes and the approval, would that be of them as reported by Dylan or the amended ones?
Uh, that is totally up to the board. So if you're looking at the agenda for February, March, April, May, there were amendments proposed. And that's why there's a link that shows you what those amendments might have been. And then the other ones, I don't believe had any documents prepared to show you. They might be verbal. I'm not sure. But yeah, the minutes can be approved as we'll call it drafted or as amended. So the amended version would be if a board member provided amendments. So they could be proposed or approved as amended or approved as drafted. If the board wants to speed through, you could do all of those as one slate as a motion and say, I'd like to move that we approve the February, March, April, May, June, July, August, and September minutes as amended. You know, and then we could have a unanimous consent for that. That's one way to get through this kind of quickly. But we obviously open it up for discussion.
Objection.
To what?
The there needs to be discussion on this because all the minutes were very different. They were written by different people. They had different formats. So I think we should take, perhaps, as you say, Dylan, the discussion on the minutes that had the detailed amendments, which was a lot of work because the minutes were extremely sparse. And since that time, the Neighborhood Commission Office has changed the format and has put, in fact, your minutes are so far superior since you've come on as our neighborhood assistant. So we could, you know, compare them actually. But the detailed minutes of February, March, April for sure. There was a lot of work put into that and it was taken from the recording. It showed the comments and concerns of of the participants as in the state statute requirement. So maybe we should just take those first. And I would like to move that the amended or the amendments to the minutes be adopted for February, March, and April.
I second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, I oppose that motion. I reviewed these corrections. I was the board secretary for those meetings and just the February corrections, for example, there's seven pages of them. I I just looked it over and it looks to me like they're not really corrections. They're changes to the writing style and their additional details. And I I don't support, like, as I've said before, I don't support doing that. It's, I think, a lot more accurate and fair to use the recording of the meeting for those, instead of interpreting the oral testimony into writing. It's more fair to the people who provide written testimony. And it's not going to cause the people who were speaking to feel that their their testimony was misinterpreted or shortchanged. So yeah, so I I will oppose this and afterwards, if they don't pass, then I will move to approve the minutes as drafted. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So is the next step would be to, since we did have a second, to approve the the meetings from February, March, and April? Is that correct?
As as amended.
Corrected, yes. And as corrected. Okay, so is there any other discussion before we have a vote? Is that what we're going to do next?
Um, yeah, I have something to say. The this is the easy way. We can just move through it and be done with it. And since the minutes are good now, I think that we should just move through it and then have it in the past. And then we don't have a problem now and go ahead.
Okay, all right, let's um, let's have a vote.
All right, so the motion on the table is to approve the February, March, and April twenty twenty-three minutes as amended.
I'd like a clarification on Linda's comment. Which minutes were you referring to the?
The ones amended and corrected. Yeah, the ones that are amended.
Okay.
We're going to vote, let's clarify this, on February, March, and April. That's it, three.
Yeah, that's the ones on the motion on the table right now, as amended.
As amended with all the
The proposed.
The proposed corrections.
Alan.
I.
Boidel.
Nay.
Decker. Hacina.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Matson.
Aye.
Murakawa. Merchi.
Aye.
Velasco.
Nay.
Weitzel. Bruce Wong. Linda Wong.
Bruce is here now.
Bruce?
Abstain, abstain.
Uh, Linda Wong.
Aye.
Welch. All right, the motion does not pass, six in favor, two no, and one abstention. Um, I believe Secretary Boidel wanted to make a motion.
Yes.
All right.
I, I moved to adopt the February, March, April, May, June, July, August, and September minutes as drafted.
I would like to comment on that.
Uh, let's look for a second first.
Okay, a second? I'll second that.
No discussion.
No discussion.
A point of order, I, I don't know, uh, Dylan, can you advise us on the chair making a motion and seconding a motion?
Yes, um, in a normal case, you could say best practice would be not to, but they are a regular board member, so chairs are allowed to make motions or second motions.
I can also second it, if that helps.
Okay, we'll go with, uh, Angie Knight's second.
Knight seconded.
Cleaner. And then I believe Linda had a comment?
Yes, it's getting so convoluted, um. Oh, I do have a strong objection against the July meeting because, um, I have a correction to make, uh, that is very, uh, near and dear to my heart and it's a big faux pas, and I'd like to, uh, point that out to the community.
Um, are the July minutes approved?
They were in the, the, the motion included the July minutes. It went beyond what Michelle wanted approved.
Okay.
What is your correction to the July minutes? If it's quick for you.
I wanted to present paperwork with it, and so I don't want to present it right at this moment. I'll bring it for the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll wait on a vote for the July minutes.
Well, we'll leave the motion as stands, but we'll take, the board will take that into consideration. So, is there any more discussion on the motion to approve February through September as drafted? That's what's on the table.
So, you'd be voting against me if you, uh, uh, vote yes on this. My.
That is correct. This is the time for every board member to propose any comments, which is what happens before we go into voting. So, thank you for your point.
All right.
I have a comment.
Michelle?
I agree with Linda because, uh, this is bunching up different forms of minutes. And, um, clearly, February, March, and April had very precise corrections because a lot of information was omitted. If you read Chapter 92 HRS, the minutes section, you will see in Section A that the written minutes are the main minutes. There can also be a recording of the meeting, but then in, uh, 92 3.7, it says, once the written minutes are prepared and according to, eh, Section A, which is the views of the participants and, uh, the concerns, uh, you can read that language, it's quite specific. Those weren't included in the February, March, and April minutes. In fact, there was some question about the timestamps. Uh, so all of that was carefully reviewed. As far as May and June, I believe Dylan, you came out with a, an internal, uh, kind of a, uh, reformatting, and you sent an email, an email to us about how the formatting of the minutes was going to be changed, and, uh, it would be very clear how people can move from the video, uh, from the written minutes to the video. And I noticed that your minutes in August and September are extremely thorough as far as even putting in substantive comments. So, I, I believe that each group of these has its own character and characteristics that we need to evaluate in order to come out with the right product for future minutes.
All right, um, I'm gonna interject here. We're down to four minutes left of this meeting, and I know that Dylan had his hand up and wanted to say something.
Yeah, just as a response, if we're talking about HRS 92, about, um, mi- meeting minutes regarding sunshine law, uh, just know that the minutes, um, I believe June might have been the first time that we transitioned over to the recorded minutes, which is legal. These were approved by OIP, the Office of Information Practices. So, don't think that anything that we're doing is illegal or going against. There are two options, you either have written minutes or recorded minutes. With recorded minutes, you need a written summary for video record, and that's what that document is, which can be confused as the minutes. Um, but as Secretary Boidel said, a great, um, rebuttal to all the back and forth of he said, she said is the meeting recording, the video. It's the most accurate representation of the meeting. So, now we're arguing about the written summary for the video record. And that's the little, the more reduced document that I put together, and at the same time, it is not reduced. It is more information because we now have the Google Drive as a partnership.
Right.
And before, you could never just click on the minutes and say, oh, these are all the documents that I do want to see, especially if you didn't make it to the meeting. So, what we're doing is providing the most information possible, and what we did take out was the back and forth commentary, because that was always the debate. So, that's our point of view. Um, but we do have only three minutes left, and we're missing several board members tonight.
Gonna have to defer it.
So, um, basically, we still have a motion on the table. If we can rush through a vote and just see how it goes, or if, uh, the mover of the motion would like to, he can withdraw, and then we can move it to the next meeting.
I'll call the question.
Call the question, okay. So, we will go through the quick roll call vote.
Okay, quick roll call vote.
Yeah, so the motion on the table is to approve February through September 2023 as drafted. Alan.
Aye.
Boidel.
Aye.
Decker. Hacina.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Matson.
No.
Murakawa. Merchi.
Abstain.
Velasco.
Aye.
Weitzel. Bruce Wong.
Aye.
Linda Wong.
No.
And Welch. All right, the motion does not pass with six in favor, two nays, and one abstention. All right, that'll go to the next meeting.
All right, um, it is 8:58. We have two minutes left. We have announcements, uh, I don't have anything additional to report. Um, committee agendas are due for November, uh, let's see, they do by Sunday, October 29th, okay.
The chair, real quick statement?
Yes.
So, that thing, um, obviously, that's not a hard restriction. Um, anytime a committee does need to schedule a committee, please contact our office. I will help with that. We will still do mailouts, but in order to save resources, money, everything involved, and to combine all the mailouts so more people see what's going on ahead of time, we're just asking that this board follows some other boards' protocol, which is send all of your committee agendas for the next month to your chair so that they can make it in the regular this meeting mailout.
Okay.
So, for November, the mailout would be, I think, uh, Thursday, November 2nd, to make it for your Thursday, November 9th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So, please use that deadline as your committees for November.
Okay.
Call me if you have questions.
All right, thank you very much. And then the next meeting of this board will be, um, November 9th, 6 o'clock, uh, at this clubhouse and online. Any other questions? All right, I officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone who's participated. Really appreciate all your inputs.
Thank you, Vice Secretary.
Do that? Okay.
There are no sub-district reports.